Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wilson? Would you bear with pray- bow with for prayer?
Lord, thank you for being with us tonight. We're grateful that we have the privilege of living in this beautiful city. As we meet tonight, we ask that you open our ears to hear your voice, open our minds that we may receive your wisdom, open our spirit that we may welcome your leadership and guidance, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. We ask that you watch over everyone in harm's way, especially the innocent victims of war. I pray in the name of our Lord Jesus. Amen.
Call to order, our November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. First on our agenda, we have a very special occasion. Some of you may know, we recently had an election just last week. It's fresh on my mind, but uh but we had, part of that election was a special election. We've had a vacant seat for about a year now, so and we will be filling that seat tonight, presenting an opportunity that I may be able to break a tie here sometime in the near future, but so tonight, we're going to be issuing the oath of office to Mr. Brian Roach, and he is going to get to work tonight, so I'm going to come down and issue that oath of office and we'll get Mr. Roach to work. So, welcome aboard, Councilman Roach.
Counselor Roach, did you tell your family how long this agenda is? They might want to go.
Break them in, break them in good, we have a long agenda tonight, but we've got some good work to do and we will do our best to be efficient and work it through, but great to have, have you all here tonight for a special occasion, so. Okay, well, we'll begin now with the consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any additions, changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have no guests and visitors tonight. In your packet, we have the draft minutes for the November second meeting. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We had no one sign up for our ten-minute public input tonight. We will move into the consent agenda. We have four items on that agenda. I will read those items. If there's anyone that would like any of those items removed for further discussion, I'll be happy to do so. Item A, approval of the annual update to the capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Item B, approval of five-year update to Canton's comprehensive plan. Item C, approval of the twenty twenty-four proposal for classification and compensation study. And item D, approval of street acceptance for city maintenance for Town Mill Pod M Phase Two. Would anyone like those items to, any of those items to be removed for further discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve that consent agenda.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. We will move into old business now. Item A, discussion and possible action on design request appeal for CDR two-three-zero-seven dash twelve-one-two-eight at one-five-two Prominence Point Parkway. Ms. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, Council made a motion to table this item so staff could provide some more information about protecting the integrity of the brick. I am not an expertise in this. This is why I provided a memorandum from, information from both Eric Fortner and Todd Gregory, who are our director and deputy director of Building and Safety Services. As per the memo, both persons stated that sandblasting can damage the brick if not done properly. Mr. Gregory was very kind to provide us with steps that he found that would be able to remove them. And the steps are listed. He stated that, that one of the methods can be used is paint stripper with warm water pressure washing, and those steps include removing deep set in paint stains, rinsing the brick with warm plain water, and then rinse the surface with warm water, and then finish your project, seal, and paint a new color. And that's if it's ruined. And Mr. Fortner said his two options were to sandblast to remove the paint and re-brick the structure if the paint removal destroys the look of the brick, or to mix colored paint and repaint the entire building with rollers and brushes by hand to maintain the paint. Staff has also forwarded a video of the conversation between the applicant or one of the representatives and our permits. Staff, you have that, and that was also provided to the applicant for their review.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any questions or comments on this case? We talked about this and since had more information in this packet on this. Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no other comments. I'd like, I'd make a motion to actually deny the design request appeal for CBR twenty-three-zero-seven dash one-two-eight at one-fifty-two Prominence Point Parkway and ask the Design Review Board to meet with discuss this project.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item B, discussion and possible action on the proposed amendment to Canton Downtown Down Payment Assistance Program. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This item was discussed at length at the last City Council meeting in regards to a proposed amendment to the Canton Down Payment Assistance Program. That amendment proposed was to add an additional category to be included for the ten thousand dollar assistance level. During the discussion two weeks ago, there was a lot of discussion and there were public comments relative to the category relating to nonprofits and the number nonprofits that are listed within Cherokee County. There were additional discussions about the possibility to simplify the program, do away with all of the categories, if you will. The staff does recommend that City Council consider increasing the down payment assistance, twelve thousand five hundred. Staff also would recommend City Council consider doing away with the category, simplify the program. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any questions for Mr. Patton, or any comments, discussion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Tull.
I would like to make a motion that we approved the proposed amendment to the downtown, I'm sorry, the Down Payment Assistance Program with the two caveats that Mr. Patton just mentioned. They are increasing the down payment amount to a flat twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and also removing the professional categories. So, all of the, all of the other categories as it relates to income requirements and things will, will remain.
Okay.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers.
Item C, discussion, possible action on ordinance to add Chapter eighteen, Article fifteen, to allow and provide regulations on short-term rentals. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the members of council. As we have discussed this item before, it's an ordinance that was prepared by Mr. Dyer's office to provide rules and regulations for short-term rentals. During the public hearings, or public hearing held on this particular ordinance, no one spoke in opposition. No one spoke in support either, as I recall. But this is, item is on the agenda tonight for possible action and to include this into our code of ordinances.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Any questions from Mr. Green? Any discussion, comments? Ms. Smith?
I would like to move to add Chapter eighteen, Article fifteen, to provide regulations for short-term rentals.
Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving forward, item E, discussion, possible action to amend H- no, I'm sorry, item D, discussion, possible action on short-term rental requirements as listed in Unified Development Code.
Again, this is an ordinance that was prepared by Mr. Dyer's office. This will list the allowed zoning districts as to which areas that a short-term rental can be utilized. Also provides a definition, same definition that was provided in the Chapter eighteen, Article fifteen ordinance change. The public hearing was held earlier this month. No one come forward, either in support or opposition, and this item has been placed on tonight's agenda for possible action.
Mr. Green? Any questions or comments? Smith?
I move that we, how should it go, Mr. Dyer? Adopt the short-term rental requirements as listed in the Unified Development Code?
Just adopt the ordinance amending the Unified-
Adopt the ordinance amending the Unified Development Code.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who is overseeing the enforcement of the short-term rental program?
It, it's the city manager ultimately, but the finance department would handle the permitting part of it.
Okay. All duties as assigned, Billy.
One more duty for the city manager, so. Any further discussion? Any further questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Item E, discussion and possible action to amend HTO Innovations Water and Sewer Operations Contract to add a full-time maintenance manager at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Mr. Otavion, good evening.
Last meeting presented the option of adding a full-time maintenance person at the, the new Water Pollution Control Plant. There is so much more equipment, sensors, pumps, you name it, it's out there, and they need a full-time maintenance person for this new facility. And, and it was also included in their last contract renewal as one of their add-on options.
Is, HTO Innovation, will they be, conduct the interviews, and will they be actually hiring this individual?
I believe they are probably bring, one of the person that's on staff now will probably move full-time there and they may bring in someone else, take his role. It's my understanding, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, thank you. And this will be funded with the water and sewer fund, of course.
Correct.
Ms. Wilson?
If there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve HTO's contract to hire a full-time maintenance manager. We all know how big that place is, and I think they need another one.
Second.
So, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Item F, discussion, possible action to amend H2O Innovations Water and Sewer Operations Contract at a full-time three-person line crew to the current staff. Mr. Otavion?
Yeah, this was presented last time as well, and it was an option that was included in their, their last renewal. And, and what this would do would allow H2O to, to do water line installations, sewer line installations, thereby not depending on consultants to do design and putting things out to bid. It will get quicker and, and a lot cheaper. There are several projects already anticipated for, for them to do this work. So, there's, there's no shortage of work, and, and if there's a downtime on water sewer line installations, they're also going to be clearing right aways some of those cross-country lines that have been overgrown that we have a hard time getting to, so.
Okay. So, we, again, we've discussed this. I think we've discussed several projects that, you know, we, we would anticipate using them on that would save money and, and time. I believe this, this contract also is the amount of three hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the, their annual cost, but it would be, it wouldn't be that much all at the start because there's a lot of equipment that's included in that that hasn't been procured, and we would sit down with them and figure out what the actual prorated increments would be until everything is, is procured.
Okay. So, if we did approve this, would, would we, should we say not to exceed that amount?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd be more comfortable with that, so. Any further questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
So, I assume that this adding the full-time crew, it also, the amount of money in the contract will also cover the equipment they're going to need.
Yes.
I make a motion that we amend H2O, H2O's contract to add a full-time three-person crew to the current staff.
Second.
Ms. Wilson, could I ask you to include your motion, the, to not to exceed the amount of three hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars?
Can, can I just make one clarification that may, this is part of their annual contract, and there is a clause for annual increases based on the CPI index, and that would be part of that, that amount as well.
So, at the end of every fiscal year, when we go to start the new budget, they're allowed a-
It's one to four percent.
A CPI increase that we have to approve as part of their budget. So, as we amend their contract, the amended amount also is, is part of that. Takes a little CPI, yeah. Correct. And that's part of our motion.
Okay. So, does that provide enough clarity, Mr. Dyer? Or should we restate that with clarity for the minutes, or?
That seems to be a little too much detail for the motion. I mean, there's a, there's a contract amendment, and it, all that will be in the contract, so.
Okay.
I think you just approved the contract amendment, so if you could withdraw the amendment.
Well, it was in our attachment that, that it would include the CPI.
Right. So, the, but the amendment that you agreed to not to exceed, you need to withdraw that.
Okay, okay.
So, that would just be the motion to approve.
Okay.
Prove the contract, okay.
Do I need to make another motion?
No.
So, we have a motion to approve the, the contract, and a second on the motion to approve the contract. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otavion. Move into new business now. Item A, discussion and possible action on the proposal for executive search services for police chief candidates. Ms. Waters, Mr. Ingram.
I've changed a little bit.
You did, you did.
Now, thank you, Mayor and Council. Ms. Waters was not able to be with us. She's in training this week, so she asked that I step in, in her place. I'm sure Mr. Peppers will be able to answer some of our questions as well. But upon hearing the retirement of our Chief Mayorfield, we need to backfill that position. It's a very, very important position within the city. We reached out to an executive search, three executive search teams to receive proposals for an executive search to fill that position. We received three proposal, proposals back, and in your packet, you have the proposal that we're recommending to award to Mercer Associates Group. That is going to be at a cost of about eighteen thousand dollars plus expenses, total expenses, total all-in, should be about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars to do that. This was the lowest proposal of the three. But just to give you an idea of the timing behind this, it's going to take us, and this is one of the reasons we're going to ask, if council's amenable to this, we're going to ask for action tonight because to get this process going, it's going to take us close to about three months to fill that position. So, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those, or Mr. Peppers will be here. He was a participant in that search, so if you have any questions, more than happy to answer those.
Thank you. I believe we discussed the goal is to try to have a candidate by March. Is that correct, Mr. Peppers?
That is correct, and just, just for the benefit of the public, our charter places the position of the police chief under the city manager. Some cities require that the council appoint that position, but our charter puts it under the city manager, and my recommendation is to have a third-party search firm take in all of the applicants for that position. It kind of removes potential conflicts and politics from that side. It helps us narrow down those candidates based on the qualifications and qualities that we ask the search firm to, to look at, and then we'll move through the process of narrowing that down to, to a final selection. The, the Mercer Group has had a history of working on police chief searches in the state of Georgia, so we felt confident with them as a third-party vendor. And, and it's, it's a very important hire for the city, so we want to make sure we get the process correct.
I agree. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make a motion. Move to award the professional services agreement to Mercer Group Associates in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, not including in, direct expenses, not to exceed forty-four hundred without written approval of the city.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. McGrew?
May I ask Mr. Peppers a question? I'm sure that the search committee will sift through the professional qualifications and send us the best applicants who are professionally qualified, but will they also be sifting through the things that are important to our community, like the outreach programs?
Sure. So, part of the, part of the process will involve the opportunity to set up a number of different groups that are part of the review process. That will include a staff group or a management group, also could include, include a stakeholder group. So, this might be an opportunity to involve some of those community stakeholders to help review candidates when we get to that point. Additionally, with this particular contract, if we get down the line and they have narrowed it down to, to the finalist, and the city's not pleased with the finalist, they will start the search over again at their cost.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Is Chief Mayorfield staying until we hire a new police chief?
Chief is retiring. His official retirement date is January second, so we will not have Chief Mayorfield with us through the entire process.
But will we have an interim chief appointed?
We will have an interim chief appointed.
We're not going to be chiefless.
Any other questions, further discussion? So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Item B, discussion, possible action on request for proposals, number six-six-one-one-four-dash-two-three-dash-RFP-dash-zero-eight-one-one for consulting services for employee health and benefits plan. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. The city of Canton has been with our current broker for about seven years. Broker services is, is many other services for the city. We try to put those out for bid every four, five, seven, eight years. This was a, at the end of this current contract, this was the right time to put that out for RFP. We did so. We received seven proposals back, one of which was our current broker. We convened a commi- a committee to review all of those broker proposals, and it came down to the, the top two were our current broker and the one that we're proposing tonight, Mark Three. This is a, they receive their commissions directly from the carrier, so there's not a per se cost to the city that I can share with you. So, this is, this is going to be a request to change an agent of record, so there's no, again, there's no dollar signs directly associated with this. They're just our agent that represents us through the carriers of each year. The group that we're proposing, and I'm not asking for action, we're not asking for action tonight, the group that we're proposing, they have got a tremendous amount of business. I've highlighted a few of those. They have Dalton, they have Bartow County. But if you look in your, in your packet, you will see that they do a lot of business up in North Carolina. See, they're a very robust company. They have a lot of qualifications. And they are, for lack of a better way of explaining it, I think they're trying to come into the market. We know, we, we've met their brokers a number of times at, at local and regional GCCMA and ICMA events. They have been very proactive in, you know, wanting to, and I think, I think they're, the list of clients that they have has shown that, that they're being very aggressive, wanting to, you know, work with North Georgia-specific clients to, to bring those type of services to us. So, anyway, if, if you have any question, more than happy to, to answer those, or those that I can't answer, I'll get those to Ms. Waters, and we'll get an answer back to you the next one. We're not asking for action tonight.
The, the agenda does say possible action. The agenda does say possible action.
If council's... Yes, let me correct. We're not required to have action tonight. It does benefit us to go ahead and get the process rolling because we need to have them onboard no later than January 1st. But if we're not required to have action tonight.
Correct. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ingram? Any discussion on this? I mean, I know in the past, since we are switching brokers, I mean, I know it takes time to pull these together. I know we've been up against the calendar in the past of getting the final programs through, so...
Well, historically, the timeline has been that our brokers work the month of January to negotiate the benefits for the next year. We use the month of February to get counsel, to get those approved. We use the month of March for open enrollment for staff so that they can take effect on April 1st, so it is a timely situation.
In mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Tullin.
That we make Mark III Brokerage, Inc., the city's agent of record for employee health and benefits.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Moving forward, item C, discussion of an ordinance to provide for a funding mechanism for public art. Theater events and facilities director, Ms. Kristin Norton-Green.
Good evening. Thank you. So tonight, we have this ordinance to provide a funding mechanism for public art, and it was prepared by Mr. Dyer. This purpose of this ordinance is to provide a funding stream for public art projects in the event that economic events cause constrictions in funding. So this policy guarantees that public art projects are planned for and executed annually as long as capital improvement projects are underway. So the ordinance includes a definition for public art that was taken from our Public Art Master Plan, and the ordinance is a suggestion, a recommendation of our Public Art Master Plan. It states that 2% of the total cost of all capital improvement projects be allocated to a public art trust fund. And the ordinance does provide for a few exemptions, such as road maintenance expenditures for maintenance in general, underground infrastructure, and underground utility projects with no above-ground components other than roads. So I'm here for any questions, if you have those.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I think the ordinance also, number one, is part of our public art smashing plan that we have already adopted. And I believe in reviewing it, it also reads that regardless of the ordinance, that council always has discretion on each project depending on economic circumstances or the size of the project to approve that amount or that funding on that particular project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not an automatic thing every time, but that's the intention of it, is to fund public art of the ordinance, so as per the master plan. So questions, discussions on this?
I have one question.
Mr. Waterman.
Ms. Green, was this ordinance a benchmark of another city?
So I first consulted with our consultant from our Public Art Master Plan, and she gave me some ideas of a few cities to take a look at. I compiled research from the cities that she recommended that were similar in their goals and in what they were working with to Canton, because she knows Canton. I also researched independently, and at the council retreat, we discussed some of the things that I thought you may be interested in or that you may have an opinion on. And based on those discussions and the research that I had compiled, I gave all of that to Mr. Dyer, and he compiled, he drew up this ordinance, and it has also been approved by the Cultural Arts Commission.
That's all. Thank you.
One question there.
Mr. Tullin.
Ms. Green or Mr. Peppers, if you could bring some additional clarity. Is there any ambiguity about potential projects that might be in our future as it relates to, does this apply or does it not apply? Do you foresee anything along those lines?
I don't think so. I think this is pretty clear that maintenance-related projects are not included, but those capital projects that are new projects would be included.
A good example, Mr. Peppers, would it be the pedestrian improvement and connectivity project that's about to take place along West Main?
Correct. So that would be a new project, but, for example, the project that we have going on in this building where we're replacing HVAC is not part of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Green, I just wanted to thank you so much for taking the vision of the City of Canton and the volunteers on the Canton Cultural Arts Commission and all the work that we've done on the Public Art Master Plan through the roadmap and getting that adopted over the last couple of years. This is basically the culmination of that, and I really appreciate your hard work and your vision. You're welcome. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So item D, discussion and possible action on facade easement for Sunnyside Mural at Harmon Center Shopping Center, located at 560 Marietta Road. Ms. Green.
Yes, that's me, too. So this is a project of the Cultural Arts Commission, and it is a mural in the Sunnyside community, and it is located in the Harmon Center Shopping Center at 560 Marietta Road. And it is the south-facing wall of that complex that is nearest to the newly almost renovated Harmon Park. And we... In the facade easement, it says basically that the Cultural Arts Commission, the city, will install this mural at no cost to the owner of the building and that we will maintain the mural for a period of five years. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. But we are recommending, staff is recommending that you authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And I think the, has the call to RFP gone out for artists on that?
Yes.
So that's in process, but it hasn't been decided yet, correct? So, and Mr. Ken, I believe owns that building, correct? So we want to thank him again.
Give a shout out.
Give a shout out for him, for his support, not only the land he donated to expand Harmon Park, but also his support of the public art initiative and the mural there as well. So questions, comments? Ms. Schmidt.
I'd like to move to have the mayor approve the facade easement.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Green. Item E, discussion of proposed special event policy and application. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have in front of you a draft copy of that special event application. Let me jump out and say, I'm not asking for action on this item. I know that for sure. Got that clear. As a matter of fact, we convened a committee to go over the special event, the city's current special event policy. There were some changes that needed to be made as far as deposits. We wanted to make sure that deposit was appropriate for the size of the event. So we convened a committee, include police department, various other departments, come and provide some input on this. And we came up with a policy that you have in front of you there, along with the application. We wanted to hold off until this time of the year, you know, with special events. It's kind of a lull, before we get into the next spring. So we have it in front of you tonight. There's, we can take some action on this if council's amenable to it. First meeting in December or the second meeting. I wanted to put it in front of you to get your input, to get, you know, to receive any questions that you may have on this. Some of the highlights that we split, we split special events up into three levels. First level being any event that's anticipated there to be less than 100 attendees. A level-two event is when there's expected to be 100 to 500 attendees, then a level-three event is 500 and higher. One of the big things that you'll see, that you'll get from the new policy, is that if it's a level-three event, we have to sit down with the event organizer and come up with that deposit. How many public works individuals, how many PD individuals are gonna be required? What rental equipment and what rental space is gonna be required of that special event for us to formulate a deposit? Because one of the things we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that the deposit covered the liability that the city may have. For example, the rental of equipment, wear and tear on gazebos and some of our park communities. So that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure to cover. You'll also see that we have included a lot of rental equipment. Our old policy really didn't account for a lot of things, like barricades, cones, we have a generator, things like that. So we want to make those available, too, and make sure that the city is being demnified for the use of that equipment. So again, you have it in front of you. Please review that, email me, ask me questions now, and I'll be more than happy to try to answer, get back with you. But if you have any questions, we can address this whenever the council's ready, at the first meeting in December, second meeting in December, whenever y'all want.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. I appreciate all the thought and the work that has gone into this. I know we have more and more events each month in the city. One question I had, I need to review it further, but on the three levels and the anticipated attendants, how is that, I guess, enforced if someone says, "I'm gonna have 100," but they wind up having 500? I mean...
Certainly. And we talked about that in our committee, is, you know, obviously, we could have event organizers come in and just bold-faced lie to us, you know, say... So we're gonna be mindful of that. Past history will be a good indication, obviously. But we will try to use a little common sense as well. And if we have any type of reservation about that, we'll require a 500, a full amount deposit, you know, to make sure, again, that they're covering the liability from the city and the potential wear and tear on the city's assets.
I believe the ordinance also allows us to shut it down. Covering events that they made a good faith estimate and too many people showed up, if the police department decides that it's dangerous, they can go ahead and shut it down.
Okay.
Or add additional public safety individuals.
Yeah, if there's time to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions at this time? I know we all have time to review this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Item F, discussion of possible action on the Heritage Park landscaping project. Ms. Pendley.
Welcome. Good evening. I am here to discuss and looking for possible action for Heritage Park landscaping project. This proposed project focuses on improving the environmental sustainability and aesthetic appeal at Heritage Park with a landscaping plan that includes native plants and a rain garden. Since Heritage Park is in a floodplain, we're looking for this plan to include more moisture-tolerant plants and grasses that will enable water to seep into the soil a little bit more efficiently while enhancing the landscape and the look of that park. I believe all of you have an attachment for the concept. It's just a concept. The concept does not have native plants in all of the looks. Before this would be installed, we would require a plant list that matches up to the current plant palette that the city has. We also, it's been brought to our attention, like I said, this is just a concept plant. It's been brought to our attention that there's a few spots at Heritage because there's no curb and gutter at Heritage Park in the parking lot. So in some of the concept plan, there is, basically, you would step out of your car straight onto River Rock. So in-house, we've discussed, the Public Works Department would add either some border pavers or do some kind of concrete through there to make it more safe for residents that are enjoying the park. I think that's all I have. We really think it'll be pretty.
Thank you. No, this is very much needed, and the concepts look great. And I saw the kind of proposed amount of the contract, I think it's $42,397.
Yes.
And assuming, would that be, I didn't see the funded amount, is that gonna be from, impact these or would it be from parks?
From SPOST.
SPOST, okay. SPOST, okay.
Sales tax and SPOST, yes.
Sales tax, okay. Awesome. Questions?
How much was that again? The dollar amount, please. Okay, thank you. Yeah, maybe 14 cents. Is that firm?
That's right, that's right.
Concrete is firm.
That's what's in the agenda packets. Say $42,400 if you want, so...
It looks really amazing. Thanks for doing this. That's a huge improvement to the park.
I think it's gonna look great, and especially the comparisons that they did in the concept.
The front of the restrooms. It's amazing.
Yes.
Miss those mud puddles, though, so...
Could we get a mural on the restroom wall?
I mean, I talked to Ms. Green.
This park floods every year, and if this is gonna help with that flooding for this amount, it seems not substantial at all. And the pictures that you've shown us are beautiful. It really will help aesthetics, and I hope it helps the flood. So with the rocks and all the underplanting and everything that's done, we're pretty sure we're gonna be not be walking in the water like we'd be in...
It seems like it never fails, and I'm sure Mr. Dodson can back me up on that. When, it seems like every year when they put mulch down in Heritage Park, within a week, it is floating away due to flood. There still will be a couple of flower beds, especially around some of the benches and those areas, those little rest areas, that we still will have a little mulch. We haven't discussed, you know, doing a project like this in phases and this being the first phase, but that could potentially come later on. Right now, we just want to see how this works and make sure it's gonna be a good fit for the park.
Any other questions? Ms. McGee.
Thank you for your work on this, and I appreciate the design taking into consideration the native plants, also the rock and the places, because the mulch just floats away. And also considering the fact that one area in particular was a little bit iffy on a person stepping out of their car, and if they misstepped at all, they would end up with a broken ankle. I would like to make a motion that we accept this concept plan, approve it, not to exceed the amount of $42,397.14.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Pendley. Item G, discussion of easement encroachment agreement with Summer Walk Owner LLC. Ms. Watson, welcome.
So occasionally, staff will get approached by developers and property owners and builders about encroaching into a sewer easement or drainage easement. We generally handle those in-house with an encroachment letter, basically just holding the city unliable for any damages to any property that's done due to them encroaching into the agreement, I mean, into the easement. The owners of Summer Walk Towns, which is the new town home development up in Summer Walk, has requested that we have an actual legal document for their encroachments. So this is what this document is for, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So this is basically a standard agreement we have with other developments, right?
Yes, it's not exactly the same as what we normally have the developers, builders, property owners sign, but I think it's basically the same. I did have Mr. Dyer review it to make sure it was...
And the city's only concern is that we get to use the sewer easement if we need to. This is all above-ground stuff, and if we have to remove it to do any maintenance, we can.
So you have no concern with it? And you don't need any action on this tonight, correct?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Item H, discussion and possible action on the award of the task order number five for the Transportation Improvement Project, Ronhart College Parkway at Highway 140 intersection improvement project design services to Michael Baker.
at Highway 140 Intersection Improvement Project Design Services to Michael Baker International in the amount of $413,909.49. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So as you may recall, this is, the agreement with Michael Baker for these projects are a task order agreement. And so this is just the next step in continuing design. It includes developing perimeter, preliminary plans, preliminary MS4, utility coordination, and then completing the Phase One environmental studies. I do want to point out, I do like to remind you that this project is not scheduled for construction until July of 2026 at the earliest, so. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And also, we're, the city's responsible for 20% of this, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And this is federal grant money, correct?
Yes, and, and the 20% that we pay is paid for with impact fees and SPOLOST.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Any questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
I know this looks like a large amount, but I'll reiterate what you just said, that the city is only responsible for 20% of this project. And one of the things that we hear the most is do something about traffic. This is where we're going to try to do something about traffic. And although this is just a design and it won't be coming down for a while, we need to follow up with DOT to make sure that we do everything they've asked us to do. So our 20% will come from impact fees, not from taxes. So I make a motion that we award task order number five for Transportation Improvement Park Project, Reinhardt College Parkway and Highway 140 Intersection in the amount of $413,909.49, of which we are only responsible for 20%.
I second that.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Pos nay? All members voted for the motion. Item I, discussion and possible action on the award of the task order five for the Transportation Improvement Project, Marietta Highway, Riverstone Parkway at Highway 140 Intersection Improvement Project Design Services to Michael Baker International in the amount of $93,799.20. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. Again, this is for Michael Baker on the Marietta Highway project. And similarly to the other project, we did task order agreements with them, and this is just the next step to continue on in design. This task order includes completing the right-of-way plans, completing a, and, and completing a design variance. Which, just so you know, the design variance is for the skew angle of Hospital Road. GDOT would prefer that we straighten that Hospital Road up with Marietta Highway. I mean, not Marietta Highway, but Waleska Street, Highway 140. But in order to do that, we would have to acquire about five properties and spend about 1.5 additional funds. So we're requesting that variance from GDOT to allow us to leave the skew there, which it will be right in, right out, so it will change slightly. And then construction is not scheduled to begin until March of 2026 for this one.
Okay. Same, same rules apply, 20% of these we're responsible for, so paid for with.
Correct.
That piece. Ms. McGrew?
Could you explain where the funds will come from for this project, please?
So 80% is paid for with federal funds. And then the other 20% will be paid for with impact fees and SPOLOST money.
Okay. And how, do you know yet how Hospital Road will be aligned?
It will, it will remain as it is now, it will just be a right in, right out. So this is to allow us to keep the skew. They would prefer we straighten it up or perpendicular to Highway 140. But to do that, we would be spending a lot of money and it would, we would have to acquire about five properties.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, Ms. Green?
I motion to approve the task order number five for the Transportation Improvement Project, awarding this, awarding this to M. Baker for the intersection of Marietta Highway and Riverstone Parkway and not to exceed the amount of $93,799.20.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Pos nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Peppers?
Just a couple of items. We received word earlier this week from our consultant, Schneider, who's working on our energy efficiency programs, including our solar here on this building. We were already going to be getting a 30% federal grant towards our solar project. We were notified of an additional 10% grant that we were eligible for. So our staff, Mr. Ingram, has been working this week to get that, that completed for us. That does fall under our $50,000 amount that we record, or request council approval for as it relates to the financial policy, but it's very close. So I did want to update you on that to let you know that we were applying for those additional 10% towards that project. Our monthly operations report for October is up. You should have received that in an email, it's also on our city website. We did have an election last week and have been working with the elections office. I believe we got our invoice for that today. It was a little over $18,000, which fits within our budget for the election. We did, I did have a conversation with the elections office about my, my professional concerns with some of the naming of precincts based upon some of the changes that have happened historically. And I am aware that the elections board is going to be looking at renaming some of the precincts based upon those changes. So we'll see what that board comes up with between now and their next big election, which I think is next year. So I did want to let you know about that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, we also have a team member of the month that I need to recognize, I apologize. So Louis Solis was brought over by his supervisor to see me last week, and I think his supervisor told him he was going to get fired. He came in and he was a little bit timid when he walked in and HR director and I were both there in my office, but we did recognize him as our team member of the month. Louis works in the police department in our criminal investigations division. And I will tell you that his recommendation was not just about the work that he does for the city, but in his particular work, he's called on by some other agencies that we partner with to help specifically with translating and participating and helping in, in, in cases. And he's always been a helper. He's always available to not only our team, but the teams that we work with around the county. And he always has a good attitude, too. So we appreciate the opportunity to recognize him as our team member of the month for October.
Congratulations, he does a great work. We appreciate it, so. There you go. Thank you, sir.
One other thing, and I do apologize. Before our council meeting in December, just so the public is aware, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, we will be having a reception for some retirees that we have here from the city. Additionally, that night, we will be promoting some officers in our police department as part of our council meeting, so we will have a pretty good crowd at that meeting. It's a good opportunity for us to celebrate some career achievements for some of our retiring workforce and some career achievements for our workforce that's moving up in promotions in the police department. So come and we'll have refreshments and we'll have a great time of fellowship and, and celebration with those individuals at the first meeting in December.
Great, look forward to that, awesome. We had no council introduce items at the agenda approval, I'm just double-checking as always. And I just have, I just want to say, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week with your family and friends, and I want to say how thankful I am to serve this city. And I'm thankful that we have a full council here to work with us. And again, Councilman Roach, welcome aboard, thankful to have you with us here. Thankful of this council, the work, hard work they do and dedication. Our, our team, our staff, their hard work, and most of all, our citizens who make Canton, Georgia the coolest small town in America. So have a wonderful Thanksgiving, everyone, and have a great evening. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Pos nay? We are adjourned.